All right. Welcome, everybody, to this Town of Orno Planning Board meeting this Wednesday, May 19, 2021. Yet again, we are on a Zoom meeting, virtual meeting. We've been doing this for quite a while. First up is our roll call tonight. I see Mike Costello. I see John Beckett. I see Judd McIntosh. Dave Thompson is with us. Lisa Buck. Krista, is she here yet?
Doesn't look like it. I saw her earlier today, so she didn't say she wasn't coming, but. Yep, not sure.
Well, we'll introduce her when she shows up. Next up, acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Very good. Thank you, John. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Good. Thanks, Lisa. I do have one item. I would like to give the board, before our public hearing this evening, I'd like to give the board an update on improvements that town staff has made since our last meeting. So I would like to bump up discussion just ahead of new business, if anybody has any issues. Right? Sounds good. With that change, all those in favor? Jessica, can you read a roll, please? I guess we'll go with that. I think we need a roll.
Okay.
Thanks.
For the approval of the agenda, Dave Thompson.
Hey, Pat, are you in control?
There he is.
Very good.
John Beckett?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Phil Rock?
Approved.
Judd McIntosh?
Approved.
Lisa Buck?
Approved.
Krista Schwenser?
Approved.
That's seven, four.
Good. And as you just heard, Krista has joined us. So, uh, thank you, Jessica. Next up, approval of the minutes of the April 21st, 2021 meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? I actually taught something for a change. You don't always have to rely on Krista to do our fine editorial work, but I did notice, Jessica, that I believe Mr. Braley's name is spelled without an I.
Understood. I will go in through and double check that.
Yep. I looked at his email. It just didn't look right, and I checked my email. I believe it's just B R A L E Y.
I will. I will fix that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thanks. That's all I had.
Okay, I have a couple.
Very good. Of course you do.
Okay, on page two. Uh, first paragraph, second line up from the bottom. Um, we're talking about a car wash. But it says car weighs.
Ah, sorry, car wash.
I do notice just one line down in place should be two words.
In place. Got it.
On the fly. Krista, do you have more?
Yeah, I have some more.
Yeah.
On page four. Uh, the third paragraph down. First sentence. Um. At the end of the line, it says. Plantings song, the Godfrey Drive. Those are plantings along the Godfrey Drive.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And on page five. Uh, third paragraph, the paragraph that starts Mr. Rock with Mr. Rock. Uh, next to the last line. Those are trash levels rather than trash leaves.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, on, um, it's the third line down in that paragraph that starts with Mr. Rock.
Okay.
And it's this line starts out out that they'd heard multiple public concerns about the trash, and it says L E V E S. Those are levels, trash levels.
Ah, sorry about that.
Okay, and on page six. Um, one, two, three, the third paragraph down. Uh, the next to the last line. It starts out. Which there is vegetation present at the site that would prevent this. It says the solar. I think we mean prevent the sun.
Yeah.
Or would block, I'm sorry, would block the sun so that the panels couldn't work.
I'll reword that.
Okay. Okay, and then this is just for clarification. Further down on that same one, um, it's the one, two, three, fourth paragraph from the bottom, and it's something about the next to the last line. It's again the next to the last line. And that line starts. Zoning stance would be for an array that large. Um, I didn't have the information with me about where the breaks were in the different groups, but I think we were talking about the largest group. And instead of saying that large, I think we should say. How large that group is, which one we're talking about.
All right, I will define the group.
Okay. All right.
Very good. Thank you.
It's a very long set of minutes, so there were many, many opportunities to make mistakes. I think you made very few.
Thank you. I'll make sure those are corrected before the minutes are added to the site.
Very good.
Should Godfrey Drive be spelled right out instead of just D R? Godfrey D R?
Sure.
My twelve. I'm not there, you know, I'm by no means am I able to correct that myself.
Yeah.
You want all instances of Godfrey Drive to be spelt out?
Sure, just to find and replace. That would be great. Thanks, Jessica.
Yep.
Other comments?
Actually, page two, second paragraph. Down the now is one, two. Third line. It says exist, should be exit.
Exit.
Good. Yeah, very good.
Okay. And then just, maybe I'm being bicker. Should it be convenience or convenience store? Off that paragraph, first paragraph on that page.
Did I use convenient instead of convenience?
Oh.
You did. You did several times, so you can just.
I will do a find and replace for that one, too. That's a, that's an audible thing. Sorry.
That's it for me.
Others? Nice, nice work on the proofreading. And again, thank you for your efforts, Jessica. Hearing, no others. Jessica, you're up again. Can we get a roll?
For the approval of the minutes with the noted changes, Dave Thompson?
Boom.
John Beckett?
Won't.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Phil Rock?
Approved.
Judd McIntosh?
Approved.
Lisa Buck?
Approved.
Krista Schwenser?
Approved.
That's seven, four.
Very good. Next up is all business. We do not have any. And as I mentioned earlier, I'd like to bump the discussion. I thought this was important. The prior to our public hearing, because I anticipated that some of the attendees of our last meeting might be joining us this evening, and we had a discussion about ways, and again, as Bell Rider hopped on the the meeting last time and mentioned that, you know, that the town is meeting the minimums for public notice, but what I requested, based on the comments we heard during the meeting, was just to see whether the town could improve upon the notices that go out. And we had several suggestions. Krista, I believe you had commented that it would be fairly simple to send for co-owners, to send two notices, those types of things. And I spoke with Kyle last week, and the town staff jumped on it, and I appreciate their efforts, and I wanted that to be highlighted, that prior to the public hearing, because again, we might have some of the same participants this evening. So Kyle, if you could, could you update the board and those that might be listening in this evening on improvements that have been made by town staff for public notice for our meetings?
Sure thing. So probably the biggest change and the biggest impact or effect that we did was, you know, each month we send out, you know, the postcards to abutters of the project. You know, previously, the postcard had some language about calling the town office with any questions or comments. And materials that were part of applications being reviewed were always available upon request at the town office. But the postcard itself didn't have any direct language saying that, and also with the town office being closed, it's not quite as easy as it used to be to just stop into the office and, you know, request seeing those. So we created a, on the planning board or the planning webpage on the town website, there's a section for planning board items under consideration, and we have put ordinance amendments there in the past. But we changed that to include a folder where we could drop in development applications for site plans or subdivisions. So that people can access those through there ahead of the meetings now. And then on the postcard language, we link directly to that folder. Obviously, I mean, you can't, the postcard's a physical thing. You can't just click on it, but it at least gives you the URL to type in. Where you could then access all the application materials for a site plan or subdivision ahead of time. And then, you know, call with any further questions still, if you had them. We also tried to kind of expand on the language that we used for the agendas and the notices where, you know, we don't want to, you know, go too much into detail where it starts taking up, you know, paragraphs at a time explaining the application. You know, and their legal requirements there with talking about the applicant and the location and the proposed use. We tried adding a little extra language to kind of look to more show the scale of the project just a little bit more, so people had a, you know, at least a little better understanding going in of the overall scope of the project. And then, I think, finally, on that webpage where we added in the development application folder, we also added a little blurb at the top, a few paragraphs, just going over the role of the planning board. What the planning board uses as far as review criteria, you know, in the town ordinances and how public comment at the meeting works. You know, and that, you know, people have the opportunity for public comment, and the board takes that into consideration. But ultimately, the board is utilizing review criteria laid out in the ordinance to make decisions based on applications. So I think those were the big things that we added. Also, to Phil's earlier point, we made some smaller changes, like in our system, if there's two names for a property, including both of those names on the postcard. You know, and some smaller things like that. So, yeah, we hope that it's improved the process and will help people going forward.
I think that's fantastic, Kyle. Again, small steps like that, but you just grabbed that and ran with it. I appreciate the efforts that you and Jessica put into that, because I do think that will improve our, our system and hopefully minimize the types of comments that we heard last time about not, not being properly noticed. Another request I made from Kyle, this was again my, my choice on this, but I am not particularly a fan during a public meeting of having the online chat. That is not how we proceed when we have in-person meetings. When I was running the meeting, I found it to be distracting when I'm, you know, again, trying to pay attention to comments and the issues with comments scrolling across the top. That is not how we have conducted our meetings in person. You know, again, we request that applicants, opposition or, you know, opponents or proponents come up to the mics, you know, state their name. And in my opinion, the, the chat just, you know, bypassed that, and I found it distracting. And I'd like to stick to the raising your hand so that comments are on the record and voiced during our meetings, and the town agreed to, or the town staff agreed to proceed. I do hope there are not any issues with other members of the board. But again, if you proceed like we do in person, that is not how we conduct our meetings. We request that, that people step up. And I hope that's okay with, with the board, but that is a request that I made individually. So. Any, any comments on that for discussion before we move on?
Good idea. Jerk, I agree with that. I actually had to shut the comments down and reopen them from time to time to make sure we weren't missing anything, but it was distracting.
I have a question about the first point in terms of access to information prior to meetings, and that is what if someone doesn't have internet access?
Sure. So the postcard, you know, still gives the number for someone to call and. Let me get the language real quick. Again, we always have the applications available here at the town office. You know, so normally, when the town office was open, it would be, you know, fine for someone to come in and view those. With the current circumstances, I mean, we're open limited basis now, but even during the the kind of height of the pandemic, when we weren't open at all. Yeah, if someone called and wanted to view a set, we could always make a copy and mail it to them if they wanted to come, you know, and we could meet them outside in some sort of safer environment. Yeah, we would be able to make some sort of accommodations, I think.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good. Other comments?
So just so I'm clear, then the chat for the attendees is disabled. They literally cannot enter any text or chat. All they can do is raise their hand, and then we'll put them, we'll bring them into this meeting so they can speak.
You confirm, Kyle?
I believe that's how it would work. And I don't know if Bell is there if the chat is shut off completely, or if we would just be taking those comments that were from people who raised their hand during the public hearing process.
So right now, the chat is cut off completely. I can turn it on at any time. So if during the public comment period, you want to have it turned back on, I can do that. But typically, if somebody raises their hand, I'm allowing them to speak, not just allowing them to enter text into the chat box.
Good.
Again, my justification is that's not how we've ever run meetings in person. There's not ongoing commentary from the audience. We allow individuals to come up and make their, make their point, and we address those. But the running chat, again, I found it to be distracting and, and just made that choice. Judd, do you have any comments on that?
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
I'm fine with the decision. I just always hate it when we have one event occur. And so now we remove a tool from our toolbox because of one. It was almost really kind of one person.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was, there was a couple, but the, I'd say that generally, they were constructive, except for anyways, I've been getting probably too detailed now. But I'm fine with the decision. It's just always a little disheartening to me when you kind of have to remove a tool from your toolbox because of one event when we've had, I don't know how many meetings without it being an issue, but that's fine if we want to take it away.
Doesn't it have to be part of the public record anyway, if, if we're going to make, you know, either a decision or a comment on it or something? Because I'm not sure how the chat becomes part of the public record.
Yeah, so if we were to use the chat, we should really be reading the comments aloud. It's more that staff would need to read the comments to the board, and then the board can consider it. But, you know, they should be read out loud, which is when if comments in the chat start to pile up one on top of another, that's when it can get difficult. But right to Judd's point. You know, if it's just one person typed in one comment, you know, that alone might not prove to be troublesome, but there's potential for it to expand, I guess.
Yeah, good.
My logic, again, goes back to in-person meetings, and, you know, if these Zoom meetings, if someone tried to mimic that, that approach, that is, that's not how we proceed. So that was my, my thinking on that.
Yep. I feel the same way. I think if we were in a, in a chamber meeting, you wouldn't have people just speaking out from the floor unless you recognized them, and they came up to be introduced.
Mm-hmm. For the record.
For the record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because as a result, I mean, it turned out to be, we made some good changes as a result of some of those comments, but somebody looking at the changes wouldn't necessarily have the historical record where people were commenting that this is a problem. And so, you know, in a sense, it doesn't, you know, it, just looking back, it'd be hard to sort of piece that together unless it was clear that, oh, yes, this was brought to our attention, and we did something about it. So I think it's important for all this to be part of the public record, and, you know, some people should, you know, feel free to come up to the microphone, introduce themselves, just like they do in a, in chamber.
Thank you. Other, other comments? Well, I mean, we're free to, you know, change our mind at another time, just based on that, that meeting. That was my preference, and I wanted to discuss it with you. It's not set in stone, but that's how I chose to proceed with this meeting. If it is an issue, we can continue to discuss it our next meeting. But tonight, that's how we're going to proceed. So next up, thank you for the comment. We do have new business. We have one public hearing this, this evening. It is a minor site plan review for Red Brick and Mortar Incorporated. DBA Firestorm to operate a marijuana retail store located at Six Store Ave. Tax map 10, lot 19, in the Commercial One District. The application is for proposed change of use of an existing storefront within the shopping center, does not involve any exterior site work or expansions to the existing structure. And before we ask the applicant, we have a couple things before we ask the applicant to discuss the project before us this evening. I. Okay. Okay. Yep. I'll get, get to you in just a sec, Dave. I do know that, uh, I spoke with Lisa Buck earlier today, and she has asked to be refused from, from the discussion this evening. And just so you folks understand her, her position, Lisa, could you just elaborate briefly?
Sure. I'm, as many of you know, I'm a physician in the community, and I treat a lot of people with addiction, and so I didn't feel I could. I didn't want to be a part of the discussion, so I asked if I could recuse myself.
Good. Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. Again. Again, those, those types of comments, if these issues arise, that communication is, is important, and I appreciate the fact that that Lisa spoke out. Dave, I couldn't hear all of what you were saying. But I believe you were talking about, that you were in a butter. I heard pieces of it. Could you, could you repeat that?
You're muted, dude.
Dave, I believe you're muted.
Yes, they did.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
What? I live in the neighborhood. I'm not in the butter, so.
Yep.
Up to the board, whether you want me to recuse myself or not.
You're not in the butter. You believe that you can approach this application in an unbiased manner?
Yeah, I can. I think I can.
Very good. Any issues from the board? He is not in a butter. All right, I see a lot of, okay, Dave, thank you. Uh, next up, I also asked Kyle, because, you know, this is a new one for us, but as we discussed very briefly at the end of the last meeting, uh, there, there's been changes to the town ordinance. And I would like it to be very clear to board members and to those listening in on this meeting tonight. What has occurred in the town and what our role as a planning board is. So I believe I spoke with Kyle about this, and he arranged to have the town attorney give us a summary of, again, not, not just this issue in the, in the Town of Orno. But this is a statewide issue, but if, you know, what we're going to be talking about tonight, what is allowed, what the town is, is voted to, to do. And that would be very helpful prior to us jumping in this evening.
I'm happy to jump in. My name is Roger Huber. I'm the town's attorney. I'm an attorney at Farrell, Rosenblatt, and Russell. It's probably a testament to how well this planning board runs that I've never actually met most of you in person. I'm usually working behind the scenes with, with Kyle. I did learn this tonight, that I need to triple proofread my stuff before I send it to the planning board, though, so. Uh, I was, I think I was asked to make a couple of comments, as Chairman Rux has, because this really is a new, a new course for the planning board. It is, it is the first retail sale, retail marijuana sale application to come before the, the planning board. And so just, just really a couple of gentle reminders, and these reminders really aren't directed to anyone or any group in particular. But I hopefully will sort of establish the, the basic ground rules. First of all, the issue of whether marijuana retail sales should be allowed in Orno has already been addressed by the voters. That, that question is not at issue this evening, and as such, to the extent the public weighs in tonight on this particular. on this particular application, those comments really should be directed to the merits of this particular application and specifically as it relates to the standards and right and review criteria contained in the town's ordinances. That's that's really all that is on the planning board's agenda this evening. The sort of the second general reminder is that that while the the planning board members may have their own personal opinion regarding the 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 wisdom of retail marijuana sales in in the town of Orno. Again, that's an issue that's already been decided by the voters. And and your your charge, your responsibility as planning board members is to apply the town ordinances, the standards and review criteria that are contained in the town's ordinances to this particular to this particular project. I know you're already aware of that. But I think it's helpful for the for the town or the the community and those who are listening in and and watching these proceedings to understand that your review is is pretty limited. And your authority is pretty limited. It is limited to this specific application and not the broader question of 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 retail sales of marijuana in the town of Orno. So with that said, that's 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 it for my general reminders. I'll I'll cut myself off and and listen in.
Thank you. We appreciate that. All right. With with that said, I just wanted a reminder to the board. Again, what what we will be discussing this evening. So with that, can I have a representative for this project? Please provide a summary of what you're proposing?
Hi, my name is Sal Faro. I'm here to speak on behalf of Red Brick and Mortar regarding the project of Six Stillwater Avenue. Along with me here tonight is Omar Abraham, who's part of our team. First, I'd like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to present tonight. By the way, a background, I've been involved in the main marijuana industry for several years now. For the past five years, I've been operating a medical caregiver storefront, New England Reserve in Old Town. We've had zero issues with either the town of Old Town or the state. Last year, my business partner and myself opened the first adult cultivation grow in Bangor, Lord Cultivation. We've we've also opened the first recreational marijuana store in Bangor, Firestorm, located on Outer Ham Street. Since that time, we have had no issues with the city of Bangor or the state. Given the town of Orno's referendum, we're looking to open a recreational store in Orno. In particular, we're looking to do that at Six Stillwater Avenue, Suite 300, also known as University Plaza. In selecting this location, we have made sure that we're not near any schools, place of worship, or the university. We've also made sure to be in the appropriate zoning district. The proposed store is located at Orno's C1 Commercial District, which is zoned for this use and is not affected by the moratorium on stores in the C2 District. After selecting this location, we have entered into an exclusive lease with the property owner to operate the store at this plaza, conditional on obtaining all local and state approvals. A copy of the lease has been provided to the council. For the past few months, we have applied for and obtained permits from the town of Orno to renovate the location in accordance with all applicable store requirements. For the sake of clarity, there's no new construction taking place. We have also obtained a conditional license from the State of Maine Office of Marijuana Policy to open a store at this location, AMS 718. If the council approves the site plan and the ensuring local authorization application, we intend to apply for an active license with the state. We intend on hiring between 15 and 20 employees to work at the store. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Very good. We'll just hold on that for a minute. Kyle, if you could add, I know you provided a detailed summary of the application again for the board. If you have anything to add to to that information provided by by the applicant or to what our town attorney had brought up before, if you wanted to make any other points.
Sure. So yeah, just to add on a little bit in general, the March 9th Annual Municipal Election at the town raised the question of whether or not the the town should should opt in to allow the different types of marijuana establishment businesses within the community. That vote passed, so that made marijuana retail stores along with marijuana manufacturing, testing and cultivation facilities allowable uses within the town in certain zoning districts. And they had to abide by certain performance standards. Not only those standards that apply to, you know, most businesses and development in town, but there are also specific performance standards laid out that many of which were were similar or were the same as state law. But just to keep it clear, those were put into the ordinance as well. So as the applicant had mentioned, this project is a, it's a change of use. There's no proposed exterior construction or site work taking place. So when things like that happen, whether it's a home occupation or just an existing commercial space converting to a different commercial use, we generally use our abbreviated site plan review checklist. So as you know, you all know, you know, if we review a new development, we oftentimes look at things like stormwater and erosion control and and all those sorts of things that happen when you're making a new impact on the ground. But with something like this, it's a the more abbreviated application as, you know, certain things just don't apply to these types of projects. So as the proposed marijuana store would be in the University Mall Shopping Center, it will utilize an existing space in the shopping center. And it would utilize the existing parking area to deal with vehicle access as well as parking for the store. There are a few hundred parking spaces there. So traffic and dealing with the expected level of vehicles that the use would have should not be an issue. As far as the specific standards for marijuana retail stores that are laid out in the ordinance, they cover a few general topics, design, security, waste disposal and odor. You know, we believe that the applicant has addressed these either in the original application or the follow-up supplemental information and emails correspondence that we had. So for instance, from a design point of view, the ordinance talks about a standard of not having any visible marijuana or products from the exterior of the store. So the applicant mentioned some frost tinting on the windows so that people wouldn't be able to see inside. The ordinance requires certain hours of operation between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. The applicant has fallen within those. Security, the applicant's plan shows security cameras in positions that would meet the requirements of the ordinance. As well as, you know, they mark on their plan an area designated safe server room where they can you know, safely store items in the store. As far as disposal, I think the applicant noted in their their write-up on their disposal plan that there isn't too much disposal needed in combination with a retail store. However, they have a plan outlined to to meet the towns and the states guidelines as far as mixing any waste with with other matter and kind of grinding it up and being able to place that in a locked dumpster on site. Odor, the applicant also provided a a short odor mitigation plan that details a few different carbon filters located throughout the store that should capture and mitigate any odor concerns for the surrounding area. And as the applicant noted, one of the big things when putting together the the ordinance for marijuana businesses was the setbacks to certain uses like schools, childcare facilities, places of worship, the university property line, things like that. Talk about would be the signage the applicant proposed two signs as part of their application, one smaller sign that would go on the the pylon sign in front of the shopping center. And then one sign that would go over the storefront. The, I think, total square footage of the sign over the store would be about 140 square feet, I believe. And internally lit, and that would fall within the the standards of our ordinance, which allows for up to 300 square feet of signage and in the Commercial One District, internally lit signs are are allowed. And so I'd say the the last thing is that the applicant did provide at the end of their application a waiver request for all of those application items that would not be relevant to a project that doesn't involve any new construction. I don't think that's something that the board specifically has to make a motion on, but just acknowledge that the reason that information isn't there is because it doesn't apply to a project without any new construction or site work.
Good. Thank you, Kyle. Just a point of clarification there. Typically, any waiver requests we we have acted on before is this, I just want to be clear on this, because of the abbreviated submission? Are you saying that the board's vote on the waiver requests are not necessary because this would affect this application and future ones? I'm just thinking that every waiver request we typically received, we vote on prior to the overall project.
Yeah, I I mean, I do recall in the past, but when I was considering this and looking through it, I didn't really see anything that would require a formal motion on that. So I mean, if the if the board wants to, I think that's that's fine. But when, for instance, when we review a minor site plan that's not an abbreviated site plan, just a normal minor site plan, an applicant is excluding all of the pieces of a that a major site plan would provide. So I I don't think it's generally required.
That's fine. We'll lean on your judgment for that, but that's fine by me. Yeah, very good. So we're going to open it up before that we open the public hearing for public comment for questions from the board. Just before we get going, I do want to ask, I noticed in the application material provided by the applicant, looking at information regarding the proposed new use on page three, it did say provisions for any onsite storage of solid waste, including screening of outdoor storage areas was not applicable. But then there was discussion about and Kyle just summarized that for some of the waste generated, you know, marijuana marijuana byproducts would be in a locked dumpster. So I do believe it is applicable. And my question for the applicant, because of you know, the locked dumpster, I just want to make sure again, if that's a new dumpster or if that's supplied by the the landlord or, you know, and if it is a new dumpster for Firestorm, where is that going to be?
That's going to be a new dumpster. I believe it's marked on the plan towards the rear of the building.
Okay. Yeah, you're putting out applicable and I disagree with that assessment. For the cycle.
But I don't see the dumpster marked on.
I didn't when I looked briefly, but yeah.
So I do think that, I mean, the board can make that a condition approval.
Yeah, I just just want to mention a locked dumpster. So I'd like to make sure that.
If it's not on there, it would be in the back at in the back area of the back exit door on that wall. We sent it off and put a camera on it.
Yeah, I imagine most of the businesses probably have something out back, something similar. All right. That's the only question I had. Other comments from the board, questions for the applicant or for Kyle? Anybody? I'm not hearing any voices. All right, I am going to open up the public hearing, just bang my pen on the table. Don't have a gavel here, but so open up for for comment. Again, I just want to remind you again, that we've just chosen to to just continue the chat for the moment, but we are requesting that you, you know, state your name, you know, where you live and whether you're, you know, you're an opponent or proponent of this project and what what the issue is. So Belle, you're up, if you could.
We have Tim White, who has raised his hand.
Very good. Tim.
Good evening. Thank you for opening the comment period. I'm in a butter. And I appreciate the changes that you've made in your process that you've enhanced them to address the concerns that were raised during the last meeting. I have four items, four questions. One is to the town's attorney, and this is just a clarification, just to make sure that the town isn't opening itself up for liability. I understand that the State of Maine has approved the recreational sale of marijuana. I understand that the town of Orno has allowed it, but it's still not allowed under federal law. And and I understand that while the federal government isn't prosecuting cases now, I just want to make sure that we feel that we're in safe ground even pursuing any of this. So that's that's item one. The second item is that the business is proposing to be established very close to a children-focused business. I haven't looked at the plans, but it's within the same building. The the trampoline park is squarely focused at children, so there are children there all the time and often in great numbers and in groups for parties and such. The third item is that it's a disqualifying characteristic if the proposed project is within a certain distance of university property. And I would propose that this project is because the field right next door to it is University of Maine Farm property. The fourth item is that it's supposedly against the rules to locate this near a church. And there is an active church that is meeting in the movie theater that's there. They started meeting. There was a Bangor Daily News article on March 7th. And they're active and they're advertising on their website even today. I just looked it up that they are actively meeting there. The last church that was there met for four years before it moved out, so it's not something that is a fly-by-night use of that facility as a church, as a house of worship. So those are the four items that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I'm going to lean on our town attorney. If you could weigh in. I am curious, yeah, the the federal question, so the first point and the fourth point for the the church issue. And I'm going to lean on Kyle for for some feedback on numbers two and three.
I can share that the the interplay between state regulation of marijuana and the federal regulation of marijuana continues to be a play and I expect the applicant is 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 probably much more well-versed on that topic. I can tell you that the town has the only role that the town is playing in this process, it's not participating in the sale or the distribution of marijuana. It is simply approving a, it is simply approving a use which is authorized to approve. So I see zero liability for the the town and the role that it's playing. Should it approve, should the planning board approve this 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 proposed use?
Thank you. Thank you. And do you have any opinion? And I'm not sure if it's a question for you or for Kyle, but. I read that Bangor Daily News article as well, that. That church services are, I guess periodically held. I don't. Don't remember the frequency, I imagine weekly, but. It church services are held in the, in the cinema, which is just up the way. So any, any comment on that other? For you or for Kyle?
Oh, I can, I can speak on that because we did look into that idea and talk about that among staff is that the. The cinema, the setback would be for. A place of worship that's permitted as a place of worship and the cinema is permitted as a. As a, as a movie theater. It, if it rents space out to a church group to use. That doesn't make the land use itself a place of worship. So just as if a church group or children who attended a childcare facility met in someone's house. On a regular basis that wouldn't make one of those things, that particular land use necessarily. So that while there may be, you know, a, a group that meets there. That the land use itself wouldn't actually be considered a church or a place of worship and wouldn't be required to meet that setback requirement.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle. Could you address the? Again, I understand this isn't allowed use in that, in that zone and as our trampoline parks. So. Would you care to comment on just the proximity to the trampoline park? I don't know the. Distance, I mean, the opposite ends of that. Mall area, but.
Yeah. So when, when the town council was really going through the ordinance crafting, child care, places of worship. And the university, it didn't, you know, other things where. You know, younger people might go and frequent. But they didn't necessarily have to go, you know, it was brought up in conversation, but it was decided that those. Wouldn't be uses that were required to be setback from. So while it was considered. Things like the trampoline park or other uses that children might frequent a decent amount. Weren't made part of the list of uses that required to be setback from for the marijuana stores.
Very good. Thanks, Kyle. Lastly, the setback from. The humane fields adjacent to the mall property.
Right. So the, the setback. Would be 500 feet and in this case it would be from the, the actual store. And not the, the property line. So as far as I'm aware. There isn't any university property line or university building within 500 feet of the storefront.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle. Very good. I don't know if the. As our town attorney said, I'm not sure if the applicant wants to add. Anything to the, the federal versus state versus local. Comment.
I like the passes on the Omar.
Hi. Good, good evening. Good evening, board members. My name is Omar. I work with the, with Firestorm and Red Brick and Mortar. In terms of the federal, local and state issue. Yes, there is a currently a conflict between federal law and generally state laws. I think almost the majority of states have approved some form of marijuana, whether it be medicinal, recreational. I am not aware of any state. Or town or other locality being prosecuted or. Or otherwise subject to any type of government, federal governmental action for approving a marijuana store. As the town attorney noted. The town of Orno would not be involved in any sale, any distribution and would not be sharing any profits or assets. So there would be. As far as I know, zero liability to the town and there's not any instance of the federal government. Like I said, holding any town responsible criminally or civilly for approving a marijuana store in accordance with state law.
Good. Thank you. Belle, we have another. Member of the public.
I see no further hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to leave the public hearing open for a few more minutes. Any questions from the board based on what we've heard? From town attorney, from Kyle. The, the points raised by, by Tim White. All right, Belle, nothing?
Still nothing.
All right. I think that that's all we have at the moment then. Last call for public comment. Five, four, three, two, one, I'm closing the public hearing. And final comments from, from the board. All right, hearing none. We do have proposed findings of fact. Before us this evening, prepared by town staff for us to consider and discuss. This is for the Red Brick and Mortar Incorporated, doing business as Firestorm for their site plan review. Dated May 19th, 2021. Pursuant to Article 6, Section 18 dash 177 of the Orno Code of Ordinances. Excuse me. The Orno Planning Board has considered the application of Red Brick and Mortar Inc. for marijuana retail store located tax map. 10-0 lot 19 in the Commercial One District. And based on all evidence presented by the applicant reviewing agencies, town departments and the public. Found the following, number one, requirements of the district that the proposed marijuana retail store is an allowable use in the Commercial One District. And that is the proposed change of use does not involve any new exterior construction or changes to the site. That there will be no changes to any dimensional aspects on the site, including setbacks, lot coverage, lot size or lot frontage. Are there any issues with that? Very good. I see thumbs up that are usual approach here. If you could all fall along with me too. Excuse me. Number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes. That the proposed use meets the provisions of applicable regulations of the town, including all pertinent sections. Of Chapter 18 Land Use Ordinance, including those performance standards specific to marijuana establishments. As stated in Section 18 dash 153 of the ordinance. Are there any issues there? Number three, utilization of the site, that the proposed change of use will not involve any structural additions or expansions of. Expansions of impervious surfaces. And the use will take place in an existing, existing commercial space already located on the site. Are there any issues there? Seeing none. Number four, traffic and pedestrian access, that the proposed use does not involve any expansion to the existing shopping center. Which would cause more traffic or change the way in which access was managed. And that the university mall shopping center has the capacity to handle any traffic and parking generated by the marijuana retail store. Are there any issues there? See none. Number. Number five, storage of materials, that there will be no exposed storage of materials. Any issues? Seeing none. Number six, stormwater management, that no new exterior construction or site work is proposed. And that stormwater will be managed in the same manner as it is currently managed. Any issues with that? Good. Number seven, erosion control, that no new exterior construction or site work is proposed. And therefore no erosion control measures will be needed. Are we in agreement there? All right, moving on. Number eight, water supply and sewage disposal. That the site can be served by offsite water supply and sewage disposal. Are there any issues with that? Okay, number nine, utilities, that the proposed change of use does not require any changes to existing utilities. Any issues? Seeing none. Number 10, natural features, that no natural features will be impacted as part of the proposed change of use. Due to the fact that the use would take place entirely within an existing commercial space and no new exterior construction is proposed. Are there any issues there? Again, moving on groundwater, number 11, groundwater and surface water quality protection. That the proposed development and use will not adversely impact quality or quantity groundwater available. Providing properties or to public water supply systems. Any issues with that? Seeing none. 12, hazardous special radioactive materials, that the use of the site does not involve the handling, storage or use of hazardous special or radioactive materials. Any issues with that? Seeing none. 13, shoreline relationship, that the site is not within a shoreline area. Are we okay with that? Right. 14, solid waste man, solid waste management, that the applicant has provided a plan for disposing any waste in a manner. That meets both town and state regulations. Are we clear on that? Any issues? Number 15, historic and archaeological resources, that the site is not known to contain historic or archaeological resources. We okay with that one? Number 16, financial capacity, that the applicant has the financial capacity to carry out the project. Are there any issues with that? Seeing none. Last, number 17, noise and lighting. That the facility will operate within the noise standards of the town ordinances and that the applicant does not have control of any. It is already approved. Is with that ready for motion?
Chairman Rock? Hello?
He froze. I think he's having internet issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So word number Schwitzer has her camera off, so I'm not sure what she's. If she's aware of that or if she had any with any defining fact or any of that, so.
Thank you. I'm going to ask.
I'm, I'm here. I'm having problems with my camera, but I've been here all along.
Right. Krista, did you have any issues with any of the items?
I did not. They're fine.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate you pointing that out, Lisa.
I do have, Phil, before we go here, I do have one question slash concern. So we're, we're sure, Kyle, that, you know, I just, Tim brought up that. The university owns those fields just to the north of this mall. Right? And I'm just looking at it in Google Maps. I just want to make sure we did do the work to confirm because it looks awful. It, it looks like it's 500 feet, but this is me just eyeballing it and it looks really close like it's. It might not be. So I just want to make sure before we say yes here that somebody did do the work to, to confirm that from that sweet. 300, that the distance to those fields, that university property line is actually more than 500 feet. Right? Someone did that?
Correct. I would also, it's. If we look at the university as a, a land use. And not just. You know, kind of undeveloped property owned by the university. And.
Right. Does, does the ordinance clearly state that? It just says university, right? Are we clear on the ordinance that we're saying, oh, it's actually where the students. Residence halls are and the, we're not, I'm going to guess the ordinance isn't specific.
Correct.
Specific.
But yeah, measuring to the, the storefront, I do believe that it's over 500 feet. And that you would be measuring directly to the store in that. Scenario, not to the property line of the shopping center.
But as the crow flies, right? Not as somebody would walk it, but as.
Correct.
The crow flies. Okay. All right. Yeah. So I guess I'm good then if we're confident.
Point, Judd.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just looking at it. I'm like, ooh, it is, it's close. So, but if we're confident that it is more than 500 feet, okay?
Well, I guess we'll rely on town staff for that.
Yep, yep. All right. I move that we approve the site plan review application by Red Brick and Mortar for a marijuana retail store. Located tax map 10-0 lot 19 in the Commercial One District. With two recommendations. The first is that the applicant obtains all necessary state and local licenses and permits prior to operating the business. And the second is that the locked disposal dumpster is added to the site plan.
Very good. Thank you, Judd. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, thanks, John. A further discussion?
I would just say that the, I think the town manager is raising her hand in the chat.
All right, Sophie.
Actually, it is Tim White who is raising his hand in the chat.
Oh, I saw both raised. On my screen, anyway.
Sophie's is now down.
Okay.
All right. I do apologize. Our process, again, with, with, with public hearings. As, you know, we have opened it up. You know, for, for comment. Town staff has told us that, that this project. Meets that setback requirement from, from the university law and that's, that's what we're deciding on this evening. So I appreciate that. Tim, but the public hearing is closed and that, that's our normal, normal process. So. Thank you for attending tonight, but we're going to stick to our, our typical rules with this case. Sophie. Did I hear her hand is still up?
No, her hand is down.
Okay.
She, she said she accidentally hit, hit the hand when she picked up the phone. So. She was not asking to speak.
Okay. Very good. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Jessica, could you read the roll, please?
Yeah, for approval of the applicant's proposal. Dave Thompson?
Provo.
John Beckett?
Approved.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Phil Rock?
Approved.
Judd McIntosh?
Approved.
Lisa Buck, can you confirm if you're still abstaining?
Yep, I'm abstaining.
And Krista Schwitzer?
Approved.
That's six, four with one abstaining.
Very good. Thank you, Jessica. Next up, even though I moved discussion, I do want to bring up that. That we do have two new planning board members that were interviewed and I believe appointed by, by council. And Kyle informed me that he has invited both of them. This evening, they did not participate in the meeting, but he did invite them. And just so you, you have a chance to meet them, I, I believe they're still attending as members of the public. And Belle, if you could. Allow them in, they could introduce themselves, just, you know, of, of just a brief intro. Again, for, for the board so that we may, may meet you this evening.
So we have just Ashley Case who has joined us. Bob Bear was on earlier and he's no longer on the attendee list.
Very good. We'll, we'll pick on him the next time. Yeah.
Welcome. Welcome.
Ashley, are you, are you with us?
I am.
So could you just introduce yourself? We're excited to have. Have the two vacant seats filled, but just tell us a little, little bit about yourself, please.
Yeah, I, my name's Ashley Case, or Ashley K. Schwartz. I live kind of down in the basin area. My husband's a recently tenured professor and I just finished my master's degree in environmental policy. We have a daughter in the school district and another baby coming in November. So we are really invested in Orno and hope to be here for decades.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you.
I appreciate, appreciate you joining us this evening and we look forward to your, your input in future meetings. So, there we go, Bob. We'll, we'll, we'll talk to him next time, so. That, that covers our discussion unless anybody has anything else. I believe the last item we have is adjournment. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Lisa. Can I have a second?
A second.
Very good. Can't tell who got it first. Jessica, that's your call, so.
Alright, give it a second to Michael Costello, because he's the one I heard.
Alright, good job, Mike. Snuck it in under the wire there. So Jessica, you're up one last time.
Alright, for the adjournment of the May planning board meeting, Dave Thompson?
Adjourned.
John Beckett?
Adjourned.
Michael Costello?
Adjourned.
Phil Ruck?
Adjourned.
Jed McIntosh?
Adjourned.
Lisa Buck?
I approve the motion.
Krista Schwitzer?
Approve.
That's 7-4 adjournment.
Just quickly, sorry, I should have brought this up. Kyle, what do we have next time?
Nothing so far, so I will keep everyone posted if anything comes in for June, but I think it might be a month off.
Oh, alright, well, maybe we'll see you folks in two months.
Peace.
Night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.